Right, good evening everybody and welcome to our first House Meeting of 2025 this evening on the 6th of January. We don't have any fire alarms planned this evening, but if there is one, then by all means please leave through the door in which you entered the building or through the fire doors behind me. And first item of business is apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies? I think it's four answers, isn't it? Dominic gave that, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Next we have declarations of interest. Do we have any? Take the Council of Delphas.
I don't know about the finance one because I pay money in, I've taken it out. And the second one is item 19 on updating the council leases.
Okay, thank you. Sharon, will that include the civilian lease or?
Yeah, but it's just an update to say no, we are the thing. So I would just be given some faculty information.
That's not for resolution?
No.
There won't be a late taking, so that's fine. Um, councillor Fraser?
Not, not, not the usual.
Thank you. Uh, next we have item four, which is a presentation by the paddle tennis players for a proposal to install a court in Alborough. Thank you. Oh, wonderful, thank you. Wherever you feel most comfortable. That's fine. I just apologise for spelling it wrongly on the agenda.
There's a big difference, by the way. They get really upset about it, can't they?
Firstly, I'd like to say thank you for giving us some time on your busy agenda. So basically what we wanted to do is to come along, I'm going to introduce myself, set people to do something, just give a bit of background about each of us as we go through. So my name's Julie Hamm and I'm actually a paddle player. I'm not professional, nothing like that. I just play with a lovely school. Got into this sport a few months back. My personal background, civil servant when I was in my younger sort of adult life. After that, went on to do a bit of facilities management, had my own company. I've now retrained as a personal trainer, so I've come back into my fitness life from when I was, when I was young. So following that, found out about paddle. Now, the only thing that happened at the time was that in my Alan's day job, councillor Alan Reynolds, he was at my house emptying my set tent. Anyway, I was getting into the car and we sort of, you know, just said hello and had a chat and he asked me what the racket was that I was carrying. And I said, oh, it's a, yeah, I said it's a paddle racket. And he went, what's that? Something like that. So anyway, upon that, we just had a little bit of a chat. I was sort of saying to him, basically it's a game built up of tennis and squash. Played on a court that's 25% smaller than a tennis court. It's a game of four people. I mean, there's some details in there, but I mean, he probably can read that all in his leisure, to be honest. But what happened really was the first thing that, that gave us the idea about paddle and what we're proposing about county paddle first. Was that following the introduction, obviously where I've met Alan. Paddle, obviously as I said before, a combination of squash and tennis, played with that racket. The tennis, the balls are actually less pressurised than the tennis court, but they look like a tennis court, basically. So our first sort of game of paddle was at the Royal Norwich Golf Club at the time. And I think Cindy will probably elaborate a bit more as how she found the green paddle court there. But at the time, that was the only paddle court in the whole of Norfolk. And that's maybe six months ago, something like that, longer than that.
About a year ago.
About a year ago. So that was the only one that was around. But as we speak today, there's still only five bookable paddle courts in the whole of Norfolk. The one of Royal Norwich is actually an outside court. So come this sort of climate, makes it a bit of a difficult one to use. The lack of paddle courts in Norfolk, obviously led us to think, why do we not have any paddle courts? When we know that it's one of the fastest growing sports in the world. If I'll give you a little bit of background about where it originated. It was in the 1960s, I think it was a Mexican businessman. Sorry, apologies. And then sorry, I started with a tangy old spoke. Yeah, so you had the 1960s, because the American businessman basically came up with the idea of paddle. Then we moved through to the 1970s. By that time, the actual thing had moved to Spain and some other Spanish state provinces. As of today, you've got 30 million plus players worldwide. Spain, Italy, other European countries are far, far ahead of the game of paddle than, than we are at all. I can probably get Sandy if he wanted to elaborate a bit more about the figures that, that go on through that paddle is such a, it's a brilliant sport. Basically, our idea is to try and get into a partnership really with councils, local authorities. Because when you ask yourself about a community of sport, of leisure time, it's mainly councils that seem to be the drivers for the community spirit and leisure facilities. It led us, as I say, to, to come up with the idea that the lack of paddle courts in Norfolk led, you know, myself and Steph to think of a way that courts could become, come online quicker and how all the community could benefit from the accessibility of paddle courts. Paddle is a game that basically anyone can play. You can be as young or as old. It's a game of four, so you can instantly see that mum and dad, two children, could go along and play this game. And what our idea is that we'd like to work in partnership, basically, with a council, a town council, local authorities in order to bring sort of unused or unusable leisure facilities that we know that councils are in control of and bring them back into some sort of use. I think one of them that sort of sprung to mind for us a bit was, I think in Deirham or any tennis court really, that councils seem to have a command over, don't seem to be utilised very much. They're outdoor, which might be part of the reason. But there's definitely, as I say, the paddle, we would probably be looking because I think it makes sense to have things that are in law and then they're accessible all year round in, in that respect. But the paddle court is a lot smaller than a tennis court. It's a great sport, as I've said, it's inclusive and what we want it to be is accessible for all members of the community. When you actually look at a tennis sort of establishment, a club, they seem a little bit rather elitist. Maybe you've got to be a member, you're not going to access anything unless you're a member. So paddle, as I say, it's a fun sport. I mean, it brings a smile to your face when you play. You meet new people. You can even operate a facility where you can, you know, use some sort of app as well that would allow you to meet others and connect and play. So it can, it's something that can go out really wide into the community completely. I mean, we've got, you know, there's a couple of pages in the thing that says what, what is paddle? You know, just, you know, paddle is a fun blend of tennis and squash. And it does have a back wall that is, is glass and then a cage along the side, which more often than not, when the ball hits there, is out. But the speciality with the back of the glass is that as a squash player, if you've ever played squash, you do know you have to have that skill to, to return on the back wall. It is a, can be a skilled sport, but it's a very fun and inclusive sport. I think we've, we've, we've decided really, as I say, that we, we want to work in partnership with councils or local authorities in order to, to spread, you know, throughout Norfolk. I mean, as far as I'm aware, there is no, no partnership sort of between anyone who's into paddle, playing paddle. Probably it's mainly private. Royal Norwich is a golf club. So probably a bit intimidating for some people if they had to go to a place like that and play paddle. They've got one court and it's outdoor. The other courts that have come on board since, there's one in Reefer called Blazing Paddles, which is a brilliant name. And they've got two indoor courts. But looking at the, the place that that is, it also did, it's been a farm over the years and it's sort of, yeah, it's very rural, so it's harder to get. When you think about Ashford Borough, you could probably jog to a paddle court. The one that, that I think we're, we're, you know, we feel that would be a very interesting proposal would be, uh, sorry, yeah, gamers, that's right. Would be the gamers, like occasion, because it's, it's a very vast field, which I'm aware has got a, a running track and a, a long jump hit, which they don't seem to be used at that area anyway. And you've got industrial sites behind you, so they probably wouldn't interfere with anything in the, you know, the, the area surrounding. I'm, I am aware that there's a housing development, obviously that's coming with Raffey Borough. And that that's going to increase the population of Raffey Borough immensely. So any extra sporting activities, it's health, wellbeing, fitness, you know, it's social, the, the social interaction is, is a major thing. I mean, if there's any questions that you have, yeah, you can, yeah.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Lart. I had my own business for over 20 years and now work with, looked after children with disabilities and additional needs for Norfolk County Council and a private agency. I'm not from a sporting background. I'm one of the Amphitripe people that hate the gym, don't like exercise. However, my daughter is home from London and she said, mum, I've heard about this new thing, everyone's talking about it, paddle tennis. She said, do you think there's any around here? And I said, well, let's Google it. And the only one we found was Royal Norwich and I'm in Tavon Mary, so luckily it's only 15 minutes. She said, shall we do it? And I said, well, I don't know anything about it, I'm not very fit, so I don't know if I can do it. We'll give it a go. And we went along, it was really good fun. And being a smaller court, I could work the court. There was only two of us, so it was harder. And we played it and I said, oh, Julian, Julian would love it because she's a tennis player. And I said to you, you must come and have a go, it's really good fun. And we just used to do this, a social time, yeah, for an hour on the court, have a chat, play. And then we realised that we meant to play with 40. So we had to find more players. And that's when we discovered that there's an app where you can actually say, does anyone want to play tennis tomorrow, paddle tennis tomorrow at 11 o'clock? And then people will say, oh, I will, I will. And over the time, it's grown. We've now met lots of different people. All ages, we've played with the old people, old people. And it's not about fitness, it's about skill. So you don't have to be super fit. Grandparents can play it. And what I would like to see from my side and background is more opportunities for children with additional needs, disabled children, because they aren't included in a lot of the facilities that are laid out. The courts can be wheelchair accessible. And so, yeah, inclusive for everybody of all ages, all abilities, no matter what disability. And it can be great fun and it is addictive. And I think we do really feel that, you know, there's a lot of private ones out there. They're quite expensive as well. The rackets are expensive. We would like to offer something that's affordable to everybody. They can hire a racket, they don't have to go out and buy them. But that is there for everyone to get benefit, not just because you can drive a car and travel half an hour to get to it, but families around here can walk and make use of the facilities. You play for an hour, you can play for 90 minutes. And, yeah, and as we say, it's a really fast growing sport and it is for everybody.
And again, it's the, the sort of clear pathway, as we've hoped, for the grassroots participation. People, you know, you don't know, you could have a paddle champion in Ashford Borough, you know. You know, unless things are tested or people have the opportunity to play. At the moment, as we stand, there is only five bookable courts in the whole of Norfolk.
Four indoor, one outside, which obviously can't be used in this moment.
So, you know, play, it's growing in other places, but as I say, it's a sport really that is, is just worth looking into.
Eventually, I'd say that every town will have its own paddle courts. For every, for the community, yeah.
And have you got anything about the UK side of things?
Some figures really. Actually, as of this year, by the second quarter, there will be 535 courts, actually in the whole of the UK. And that's not my figures, that's from the LTA. And there's 69,000 people in the UK. So if you look at Pro Rata, the ratio is very low. The difficulties with paddle is accessibility. People have to travel up to an hour, hour and a half to get to courts. There are 90,000 people who are playing at the moment. They reckon by 2026, there were 600,000. They reckon that, this is not really a business check with the LTA. There's requirement by nearly 1,500 courts by, by 2029. In Spain, it's, there's nearly 20,000 courts, there's 55 million people. But it's the second most played sport after football. Obviously, what Julie and Steph have said about gamers. I mean, people are associating football with sort of the next sport, which is paddle. I mean, it's, you know, it's one of those sports that everyone can pick up. You know, it's depending on, from day one, it's just underhand serve.
But truly, it's what I should be talking about. It's, it's a very good, good sport to be involved in. And again, I think it's the, the wide connection and the people that you could take with it, to be honest, from young to old. Yeah, so it's a very inclusive sport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Stubb, do you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. You have said that you are happy to work in conjunction with other authorities and groups and, and possibly, have you looked at any possible to, to move courts anywhere else or?
No, no, you are first.
You are first. I mean, we're actually, I do understand why gamers is very appealing. Members does have covenants on it, so I might be tied on how we can use games. But we do have property opposite the Boney building. I don't know how big our flots are there. I know we've been in discussion about taking down the, this and having something new there. It's very early stages in project things, but I wouldn't know the dimensions. But we do have a projects leader for the council, but works in conjunction with us and Breconham District Council. Has Megan been asked this project to look at?
Not yet, no.
Is, is that something that members would be minded to do, passing to members with that?
I think Councillor Reynolds has had a very brief discussion.
Yeah, I saw Megan about three months ago and I sort of put this forward to Megan about paddle. And she sort of said to me, well, have a word with yourselves and bring it to a town council meeting and see what I think and I, then we'll move on to talking to Megan about it. She's sort of pushing forward to hear first and seeing what everybody thought.
Councillor Fraser?
Well, first of all, thanks very much for being this night. I have to say it.
I was going to say, it's already wearing a rugby place out.
But it's sunny and climes on any continent. So, so tonight, I think, you know, following on from Councillor Estorna, it's what's the ask for us? First of all, rather than, you know, just introducing it, I think it comes with a support, community project, support, health, sports and, you know, it's embedded, you know, making a plan. So it's what's your ask? And then secondly, in terms of thinking how to take it forward, as Councillor Estorna said, gamers problematic, you can't literally build on it. There's covenants on there. That's why there's no permanent structures on there. There's a number of options, long term. It's part of 4000 housing dwellers, going to be new sports area, whether we can incorporate in that, that's very long term. Short term, whether we can bring Megan in, so that's with the partnership manager. Is we're renovating the existing sports hall, extending that, we're in discussions with 3G pitch, which is happening at the school, at the high school base. The plan is the high school becomes a centre or one of the centres. There are existing tennis courts there that we're in discussion about, can we use those? So short term is, does one of those tennis courts convert into one of these courts that the school could use? But also we are looking at, can the tennis courts themselves be used for public linked to the sports centre or the leisure centre? So you've got to check ourselves out. So I'm just chucking it out there in terms of further discussions, you know, to explore. But first of all, it's what you're asking me from us because like this, it's going to cost a bit. And it's just understand what, what it means in the connected world.
When you say about the school, which is fantastic, I mean, I think there were safeguarding issues between, I think, eight and nine. You know, because obviously, I think actually, sorry, eight before, sorry, eight before. So that would be the time the school would be able to use it. Okay, but it's not really, it wouldn't be accessible.
No, you're right.
So that then sort of precludes, I know that.
That's the weekends.
Yeah, you know, well, it, it precludes it and it makes it financially really not viable unless you're going to allow people to come in there from, you know, four o'clock onwards until 10 o'clock. So that's one of them.
It's quite common to paddle courts the open and until.
I'm just chucking it on there.
No, no, it's not, yeah, yeah.
It's one of the questions that obviously looking at, because I know that there's obviously being older people, I mean, you know, in sixties and, so you, there are a lot of people who want to play during the day, 6:00, 6:30. You know, I find it difficult driving at night, you know, believing on the eyesight code and everything else. So, you know, the younger people want to play actually at that time. When you say about building, most, you can actually have temporary structures because I actually haven't looked at, you know, meanwhile, sort of planning application. So if someone's going to be developed, it's going to take three, four years. Say for instance, a plenty of square or something like that, which has been going on for years and years and years. So you could install something there which could go up within a week, basically. And it was just like a normal court, you've got canopy over it. So there are temporary structures, that's why I've come, I'm actually a surveyor in any case. So, and I've looked at what the, you know, construction elements are and everything else. So there is that, but like you said, it would be better where you can actually build a permanent structure because you get much more better use. If it's out in the open, open to all weather, you're dropping like 55% usage around. You can let the man that you play it, you need really sort of quite good weather. If it's going to be covered courts, you get up to 80, 85% usage. You ask for that financial, obviously, in relation to each court, whether they're outside. It's the quality of the court, they vary from 36,000 to a panoramic court, that means there's hardly any, it's mainly glass. They're around sort of 46,000 pounds. But we're talking about partnership where the money that's given will be paid back. And it's like an asset finance effectively. So as the revenue comes in, we'll obviously pay for, you know, rental of the space as well as payback money towards, actually the courts themselves as well. So, you know, they find an appropriate share on the money to the right with the balance.
Thank you very much. Councillor Unfeld?
Quite some time, but this is a very quick one. Somebody mentioned the LTA. So, so I guess my question is, why, I did a bit of research on this before the meeting. There is a difference between paddle with EL and DDLing. There is paddle tennis as well, so that was a, so there's a difference in terms of court, number of players and racket type side of the story. But in terms of the, in terms of the LTA, are you, one, affiliated to it, two, governed by it, and, and three, is there any prospect of funding from the LTA?
Well, there is. We actually had a meeting with the LTA last year, actually on teams. And there is actually loan facilities up to 60 to 70%. And they're actually over a 10-year period. And you would have seen that yourself if you'd done some research. And they're interest free. But they've got to serve the community. And that's, that's the, that's the general gist of it. And that's why we wanted to speak to you. And, you know, having an association with someone like, you know, Ashford Borough Town Council, a public body, it makes it more recognised with the LTA as well. So, you know, we're not a member of the LTA, but it would be feasible to become, you know, that you are endorsed by them.
Again, thanks for your time. And you've got pickleball as well. Which I know is different. So you're talking about roughly 35, 45,000 pounds.
Correct.
That includes the, the, the base structure.
It's, it's a completed court.
Right.
Complete, you know, it's delivered, yeah.
Okay. And what about business case demand? Is there any research to confirm that this court would be used as much as you're thinking?
I could show you all the figures. I haven't done that in there because it's, you know, I've done all the EBITDARs, everything. You know, the actual hours of usage, you know, from between nine, sorry, eight until three o'clock. It used like between 25 to 35%. Between four o'clock until 10 o'clock, you're talking about 90% usage. Weekends completely 100%.
Yeah, sometimes we can't get, we can't get all.
I'm sorry.
Would you build one or two?
I would look to build a minimum of two.
Sharon, have any questions in support of your proposals? So the item tonight was for the presentation. It wasn't for resolutions. We're unable to make a decision. But if members are in agreement that there is, you know, a, a desire to seek whether or not we could get some provision, then we can leave that in Sharon's capable hands to liaise with Megan and yourselves. And, and to see whether or not there's any viable options. And if members have any suggestions for areas that might be a possibility for them to explore, then by all means, pass them on by the office.
Do ask, we can contact numbers and email, Chris, you can back with me.
Thank you so much. Next, on the agenda, agenda this evening, we have item five, which is item five, which is the Riitt Town Hall Car Park and the unadopted roadway to consider responses from property owners for consideration and resolution. And Sharon has an update for us.
I've got a very, yeah, off the press from about three o'clock this afternoon. I've had a, one of the residents has basically said that they are willing to, because if you recall, it was the, the nine thousand pounds for the spare bit. The town council has agreed that they would grant 50% of that, 4,500. We've had a resident who has come forward who wants to remain anonymous, but they are willing to donate the, the second 50% in its entirety. donate the, the second, uh, fifty percent in its entirety.
Counselor Taylor.
I think that that is an amazing question on that residence behalf. What I do feel though, that it is such a great shame that so many people use that driveway and feel that they have no responsibility whatsoever in helping to fund that project. That I think some of them for over twenty five years have used that driveway and feel that they don't have any obligation to help maintain it. And I personally feel that most of the residents that have ignored our, our request for engagement just felt that if they just ignored it, we would stump up public money and pay for it ourselves. Um, I think it's a wonderful gesture, like I said. Had that gesture not have come forward, I would not have been spoiling that this council paid the full amount for that five way, because that is unfair on every resident in this community that lives in an unadopted roadway. And then I, I think that this is a wonderful opportunity to move the project forward, but it's a way in that those residents that use it did not feel that they should participate. And I think that's a moral shame.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Funny clarification, I mean, fantastic, and, you know, please, thank, that's on our, thanks and rest you. Um, there's no catches to it.
I don't think so, no. In fact, no, I don't think so, no, absolutely, I'm fairly confident now. Um, that residence, uh, is willing to, if, if I asked for the money on Friday, that resident would pay that money on Friday. Uh, there is one thing though, uh, just to sort of cover, sorry, uh, just, um, obviously, uh, what you probably saw, one of the points raised was what about future maintenance? And I suppose it's, it would just be the case that we know the roadway is going to be good quality, because judging by the company that did this, gamers, that's lasted years and years, so. But when it needs maintenance, I guess we just worry about that, yeah, we worry about that in future, yeah, just needed to air that.
Counselor Ashby had his hand up first, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, um, Sharon's answering my second question. My first question is, can we get that money up?
Yeah, I'm pretty confident.
Well, I would recommend that we don't do anything till we do.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, okay, I will request it tomorrow then, yeah.
Good.
Okay, certainly could. Counselor Ashby.
I just, again, it is what Counselor Ashby said, because we don't want to be fall out, but this is just, we, we commence the work, but it's, I think we went into this as a good neighbour, a good user of the facility, hoping to work in conjunction with everyone else, so this is a one off. One, I think, comes into disrepair again, we'll leave for the council at that time to decide. But at this moment in time, I wouldn't be taking any responsibility, and I wouldn't be happy the council to take any responsibility for future maintenance.
Do you think if we want contingency in case the money doesn't come forward? Yeah, what I would just say first is, um, I am mindful that you've had to travel to be here. So by any means, if you want a leave, you can, but if you'd like to stay, it's very well into. I didn't want you to think that you're now prisoner for the rest of the night.
You're about the answer.
Um, yes, so if we have a proposal in, in regard to item five, and that would be the subject to securing the fifty percent funding in advance of the works, the works will go ahead, um, as a one off, um, with no further future responsibilities.
Yes.
And Counselor Ashby is seconding, and can I show hands please? And that is unanimous, I think.
Oh, just so that we check the necessity, that would be the case, if we do want to go, we would not be by catch twenty to taking on responsibility.
You can talk much longer.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, well, check.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, next we have item six, which is public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate? Yes, Lesley?
Um, just going on from what you've been discussing, um, I did notice on the, on the paperwork, that other residents have offered to help. Will you be going back to them in addition to that generous person? Because I think, as they've offered to help, I think it'd be sort of wrong to not ask them. And also on behalf of the other residents in the area.
Don't know, what do you think?
I'm minded to say yes, if they.
Well, I think so.
Yeah, I, I, I would be minded to say yes, is everyone in agreement?
Yeah, there were some proactive responses.
Thank you for your helpful take.
Hmm. Hmm.
Yeah, thank you. Um, there are a couple of things, as usual, there's there. Um, BT sign, have we got any vote before, would you like any advertising, any local companies?
Some, no.
Advertising board.
Excellent, yeah. Um, I don't think I had anything. Last I heard, that they were still doing their final dress, but that was quite a few months ago. I will chase that up, yeah.
Counselor Taylor? I can't remember the officer, it's very important, but when he was in the office, we did speak to somebody, and they are still having trouble trying to find out how to access it and popular it.
So it'd be wonderful if we could get sort of local groups and everything advertising on it, when there's heavy functions. Yeah, it'd be fantastic. Um, Queen's Road crossing, any more news on that?
Not at the moment.
Thank you, sorry, that's it for now.
Thank you, Lesley.
You're welcome now.
Anyone else? No, okay, we'll move on then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have item seven, which is the minutes of the town council meeting held on the second of December, twenty twenty four. Uh, can I please have a proposer and secondor or any amendments?
I could, I, I don't recall voting for the way finally, uh, accepting responsibility for us. I abstain.
Would you like that amendment?
Please.
With that amendment, uh, Counselor Bertram proposing, and the secondor from Counselor Waits, and show of hands please. Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, next we have financial matters to authorize comments. All right, just like Counselor Fraser. Any queries, if not, can I have a proposer and secondor please? Counselor S Taylor, seconded by Counselor Waits, and show of hands please. That's unanimous. Counselor Fraser, you can come down. Uh, next we have item eight B to agree direct debits. Uh, again, any queries or posing secondor, Counselor Bertram, seconded by, uh, Counselor Wingfield, and show of hands, thank you very much. Uh, next is item eight C to receive income and acceptance approval. Can I have a proposer? Please, uh, that's. Sorry, can we have? Uh, please, um, a proposer please. Counselor Bertram, seconded by Counselor Reynolds, and show of hands. Thank you. Uh, next we have petty cash, that's for information, any queries? None. Income expenditure for information, any queries? None. Uh, and item AF to appoint the internal to, uh, for twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six for acceptance and approval. And does anyone have any questions, queries, if not? It's Kerry Richard, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, if that's okay.
So Counselor S Taylor, you had your hand up?
Yes.
Forward, uh, a secondor please, Counselor Fraser, and a show of hands. That's unanimous, she always does a good job. Um, next we have item nine, which is the station road signal box for listeners, uh, which is important for consideration and resolution. Any questions, any queries? I think it's fairly straightforward. So, uh, Counselor Fraser, seconded by Counselor Taylor, and show of hands please. That's unanimous. Um, item ten, ratified, put it to exchange group, the youth provision, Acreborough Town Council for consideration. Um, I think everyone's had been circulated, um, it's an opportunity to make comments, so come please. One, I have a proposer please, Pastor Dalton, seconded by Counselor Dale, and show of hands. That is unanimous, thank you. Um, and then there's a, a ten A, twenty two, exchange through youth provision, estimate for disabled toilet conversions, six thousand pounds for consideration and resolution. Um, is this to supply and fit or to supply?
I think it's to supply and fit. Do you want me to clarify that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, can we get clarification on that, then defer it to the GPNF committee?
Yeah, okay.
Take it, we only have one person on forward, so.
We did, we did approach another, um, person to do the, uh, estimate for the, uh, good, uh, for the, um, what we need.
Supply and it's going to be.
And it was going to be fitted for free, which could still happen, but that person didn't sort of come forward with any prices, but I did keep chasing, so we had to, yeah.
Okay, so everyone's happy for that to be deferred to GPNF, yeah? Okay. Uh, item eleven is the quotation for the phone building shower rooms, um, which is five thousand three hundred and nine hundred for consideration resolution. I think Sharon did, um, talk us through this at the previous meeting, but unfortunately there wasn't an agenda, right? Um, uh, Counselor S Taylor.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Um, it has come to my attention, and the other half of, and also the Plaques' attention, but, um, the immersion heater takes three hours to heat the showers up apparently, and they go in the top club and turn them on, and then they check them up at twelve to make sure they're hot on. But then the matches, they finish to three, so actually that immersion heater was on for a considerable amount of power. Um, I'm just wondering if, A, it's legal, like, if we can, um, have electric power showers in a public building, and whether or not that, that quote, this quote is replacing the showers that are there night for night, or if this quote would include power showers, because I just think, obviously, I know it doesn't seem like among that time, five hours to have immersion heater on, but if we could just use the electric as and when the showers are being used, right, and they're on most of the day. And that's if anyone turns it off at three o'clock, or if they turn it off when they're hot, you're just, well. I just wondered if we could, that maybe have this amended.
Yeah.
And if legislation states we can have electric power showers in a public building.
Yeah.
Sorry to be annoying.
No, that's absolutely, yeah, I'll go back and I will double check, great job.
Is there gas there?
No, uh, well, no, no, there's no gas, is there? Um, but, but there certainly isn't any, there's not a gas boiler as such. The immersion heats the water into three separate tanks. Yeah.
You have an undemand.
Yeah. There, there is a little gas, uh, sort of like box, if you like, at the bottom of the drive, uh, that, um, Angling Roadways noticed, but to my knowledge, there is no gas coming into the building. And when we had, um, uh, oh, the name of the company, um, who did, did the, um, the Essels heat pump, and they came and looked, and they, they did tell me there doesn't appear to be any gas, and he, he was the engineer, so, um.
But I'll take your part, so the time first.
Um, just adding on to Counselor Taylor, in the distant past, did we not have a policy of almost a checkness in the town council in terms of our environmental and sustainable? So it's coming back to, you know, immersion heater, or is this something more sustainable? Now, I know there's cost issues, but also there is a public face and issue in terms of what we did, the automotive sustainability and everything else we need to look at.
Yeah.
Try to be aggressive, but within constraints, but. So I don't, I don't work, don't know if in a while to call this, that's a while ago. Probably we need to do a bit, I'm not trying to complicate it, but.
I, I don't think anything was ever, um, formally adopted, um, and it's, and a desire was expressed, uh, but I don't think there's any.
It probably was, I'm damned.
Yeah. Uh, Counselor Taylor?
Um, just moving on from Counselor Taylor's point, we should know, we have a moral obligation to, like, try and be as sustainable as possible and money saving as possible, but I actually have an aspiration for a family work. Um, and it doesn't, it just says wait in shower room, remove existing tiles, showers, etc. I make this good and need this line fit, six times three hundred grey tiles, oh, and new showers. So that is new showers, but obviously we would want to address that within this, because that might alter the price if we have electric power showers put in there.
Yeah.
And if we're allowed to, I just think it'd be, whilst they will be retired, if you're no grown up, to do the work now rather than look at doing it at a later point. But I'm happy to approve this bigger.
Yeah.
Today, subject to those amendments, if those amendments come into Sharon's discretionary spend over this amount, or under, if we're lucky, it could be under, but it probably won't be.
Yeah.
I'm happy to also propose at this point that Sharon's allowed to go up to her discretionary spread spend to get this project started.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I, I think I just about got the gist of it, so it's, it's the, the quotations accepted with a view to explore whether or not an alternative source of shower, an electric shower, could be used instead. If it, if it can, then up to an extra one thousand pounds, uh, it has our approval. If it can't, then we will progress with as quoted.
As, well, no, it's still with the electric showers.
If they're not viable, if we can't have them.
If we can't have them.
Then we progress, yes.
If we can, then we just tag the electric showers if they come home first, Sharon's.
Yeah, that, yes, clear.
On the GPNF committee.
Is everyone content with the proposal? Is that a secondor, Counselor Susa? And a show of hands please, thank you very much, everybody, that's unanimous. Uh, next on the agenda, we have item twelve, which is electoral review of Breckham Council draft recommendations, consideration and resolution. Uh, does anyone have any comments? No comments? No, well then we'll just pass that one by. Uh, we have item thirteen, which is the contractors list for consideration and resolution. Uh, does anyone have any comments on this? I think most of them are frequently used, we're well acquainted with now. Uh, Counselor Ashby?
I'm just looking at fencing, G and G fencing.
Uh, yeah, they have done the fencing at the skate park, they have done the fencing at London Road.
Yeah.
And it says somewhere else.
Uh, yeah, they were going to do the tennis court hall, um.
Did they, did they prepare that?
Yeah, just repairs, yeah, I don't know if they've done that.
But their, their quality of work has been very good, I will say.
And I've used it before my previous role as well, many, many times, yeah, they do.
We've also heard, um, just the guy's name.
He worked it, didn't he, but I don't think we've ever actually used it.
We have, we definitely have.
Yeah, is he the one who did the?
No.
No, okay. That was quite, yeah.
We've definitely used it.
Yeah, did he? Oh, okay, yeah.
I just thought, unless I'm misremembering, we've used him before, and his quality works okay. I don't want to get in trouble.
Okay, yeah. Can you remember his name? K something?
I, I, yeah.
He uses it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll add that in.
Counselor Taylor?
Sorry, um, just, just for clarity, did, did we say last time when we were pulling this together, we didn't send a general limitation to all companies on the activities? And did we have some kind of?
I, I didn't do that.
I, I think it's just people that, that, that we have used in the past, that we know that their quality of work is good.
No, 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 it's. Safe ones, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, with Counselor Ashby's amendment, can I have a proposer and secondor? Oh, sorry, is that a comment?
This is my question. Um, um, hedging, have we got any other options? Took them an awful long time, and they're bloody terrible. Um, have any other options, after that?
Uh.
At all?
No, sorry.
No, that's all right, no, I appreciate that, but if you have an alternative, that would be handy, so there is.
Uh, uh, if you're not happy with that particular company being on that list, I can remove.
So, yeah, so these are, the, the, the list that's been presented is companies that would use previously, that would have been satisfied with the work, but if Counselor Waits is saying that actually, the quality of. But if councillor Fates is saying that actually the quality of work.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking about what happened last year.
Yeah.
I cut the hedge.
Right, well, um, are you saying last year, as in?
Back end of the year.
Yeah, yeah, in autumn, so the latest cut you weren't happy with.
No.
Okay.
We signed up to them for about the next three years.
Yeah, we, we've got a contract with them.
They've run on term contract, but what we could do is um temporarily remove them from the list. See how their work is over the next couple of years, we could then put them back on. Or when it's up for renewal, we could seek quotes from alternative companies.
Check as well how often it starts to do it at that point, it'll negate the mess that they created.
Yeah.
Where is this?
They are contracted.
Oh, so it's hedged down by the um football club.
Right.
They are supposed to come twice a year, are they? And did they come twice? Yeah, they did come and do some work, didn't they? But not obviously, the big one is autumn, yeah. But then they have just been taken over by, um, although I might have put the original company name, they're, they're called.
Nurture.
Nurture, nurture, yeah.
That's it.
Okay, yeah.
Are you happy with them staying for the time being?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, this document's going to be reviewed.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's just, hey, so if you've got, if you've got another alternative.
Yeah.
Appreciate them on who possible, but certainly also we ought to bear in mind, subject as well.
Um. In that case, can I please have a proposal in a second, councillor Fraser, seconded by councillor J Taylor, no, show of hands, please. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have item fourteen, which is councillors' report, has been any councillors have reports to do? Uh, no, um, just a brief one for me, obviously, it's been the right up to Christmas, so uh. I feel like we've had a little bit of a break from our duties. Um, what I would say is that in the town hall yesterday, we had our first community cafe. Um, the attendance was quite low, but I think we could have worked a little bit harder in our advertising. Um, but actually, despite the low attendance, it felt like a quite a, quite a successful session. Um, and uh was very enjoyable, um, so please do spread the word, um, every Sunday, twelve till two, here in the chambers. Uh, we have a community cafe, um, councillor Wenham did come along and volunteer on his birthday, so thank you very much. Um, and if any other members would like to pop down, uh, have a cup of tea with um our residents and help with the serving, you would be very welcome to. Councillor Taylor.
I mean, don't forget, there are a couple, we are kind of have to move them on Sunday, because there's other people in the hall.
There's only three for twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I was really pleased with how it went, the, the vibe was lovely, the ladies that attended, all seemed to really enjoy themselves. And we did put some puzzles out, but maybe I think next time we might look at some ball games. Out and we start and maybe sort of add some better music than the one on councillor Fraser's. But it actually was, was a good thing. We have had some feedback, a couple of businesses that would be interested in getting involved, which is. What the intention was to get as much of the people to pull together as possible, um. With, without any stigma of any financial standing or, or anything. It was like, it's loving people to get as lonely or on their own, as well as those that maybe are facing a little bit of financial hardship without any. Without any judgment, and it was lovely, um, in my other role, other than this table. Several was quite quiet, we had a licensing panel, thankfully it wasn't called forward for any business in that for us, that was a bonus. And I attended them on the London Hall York time event, which actually was lovely, and I got to take councillor detail with me. Which made it all Christmassy and nice, but um other than that, I haven't done much. But if anyone wants to come along, to want to have a community cafe, it's lovely.
Thank you. Any further reports? Okay, well, we're done. Uh, next we have item fifteen, Clark's report.
Okay, yeah. Um, the deposit for the kitchen, this is town hall improvement, the deposit for the kitchen refurbishment has been paid. And it is hoped the kitchen works will begin in mid to late January. Um, we've been given a tentative date for the front door conversions to automation and inner door widening, first of the third week in February. Uh, tarmac-ing to the rear car park is scheduled for the first week in February. There may be disruption to one or two bookings, possibly more, but some will be offered. The Vono Building where, um, uh, possible in the interim period. Town council maintenance, um, the tubs in town are undergoing, undergoing some maintenance in readiness for planting the spring bulbs. Some of the team are helping to make some improvements to the exterior and interior of the Vono Building, along with councillors. Um, S and T Taylor, as well as um councillor Fraser, um, who have been helping to repaint the downstairs area. And is looking markedly improved, I think, as you've seen from the pictures. Uh, the winter work to the town council's land is continuing and many compliments have been sent through with regard to Equal Common and the cemetery in particular. There is much planning underway to make more improvements to the, uh, I'm talking about the Vono Building. Um, orders have now been placed for the new windows and doors, roof repair, CCTV system. Disabled toilet conversion, refurbishment of the showers and new flooring in the bar area. And also the roadway leading from Station Road has now been completed and is looking much improved with the line markings now in place. Um, Queen Square, we had our Christmas market, which took place on the fourteenth of December. It was a really good turnout, there was a slight hitch, I think you all know, with having to cancel the two choirs due, due to a licensing error. The clerk has been working with Brekland officers to plan in two football counters, which we hope will be in place towards late February or early March. Uh, the public toilets in Queen Square, the two doors to the public toilets are both out of action due to mindless vandalism. It, I, I was, I say mindless, one of them was not mindless, it was purposeful vandalism, where. The individual came along and needed to get into the toilet, so used pliers. I haven't had any feedback, but we know, we've got the individual on camera, passed that footage to the police. They, they think that, I, I think that they should be able to contact that individual, because we know somebody made a call to that person's phone. So there is a, obviously a number that the police would be pursuing, so I can't see that they wouldn't have been able to contact that person. So, yes, I hope that they do get prosecuted, because it's really put a lot of people out, um, who haven't been able to use the toilets since.
Are you able to chase that up?
I will chase it, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Um, and obviously just to sort of reiterate, um, the, um, I've had an email through this afternoon about the, the doors. I think we've got to choose colour, so I think we've got to, it's going to be powder coated, so I, I will pass that on and. Um, how we're going to choose the colour, I don't know, but if you want to leave it to delegate it to somebody, um, we can do that, um. I just wanted to clarify, if I may.
I don't know. Town is black.
Yeah.
So it's a blue. As said, our places are black, our items are black, our after hours are black.
So you want black doors?
If, if they, if they could, if they send it out and then we secondate and just write it by email, I feel like it's such a trivial thing. If need be, it can be ratified at G P.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Sharon.
And did you want payment fee twenty p or did you want ten p? I think it's, we did say twenty in the end, didn't we? I think at the last committee meeting, yeah. We voted, yeah, sorry, yeah. Anyway, new youth provision, the lease is almost completed or has been, um, uh, approved. And work will begin shortly to convert the toilet area and kitchen to make it D D A compliant. Uh, thoughts are now turning to new flooring, furnishing it, and it is hoped to conduct a meeting shortly with the interested user group, so we would like to get that rest.
Well, just coming on, I think the councillor's claim of rental itself, if we can in the next week or so, okay. We now got a contractor that's willing to supply flooring throughout. And, but we do need to take up those, those tiles in the main areas of the building that are all quite uneven and, and not very well made. Um, he has said if we do that, he's happy to come in and do all of the flooring, which I think is a fair trade off, as he's doing the flooring for free. Which I, I think this council actually, I mean, I don't think it's a secret.
Supply and fit.
He's buying it in, and that is like his flooring, which I think is a very valuable advantage. This is forward, but if anyone wants to come along and feeling they've got some good strong muscles, once we get a date that they're going to do it. I would help like to have a chat, come and have floor up, I'm going to see if I can, um. Talk to somebody about the names and the names that skip and taking it away, but um afterwards, but yeah, if anyone's feeling good.
That's great. Thank you, Sharon. Yeah, lovely. Yeah, okay, we'll get a date sorted. Uh, bar in the town hall, interviews have been held for new bank staff. Um, there are three shortlisted candidates to date, um, uh, we, I think, we've had interviews now since I've actually written that, so. Um, but applications are still welcome, uh, would be nice to have an even bigger pool of bank staff. Uh, two parish partnership applications recently made were for new bus stops along Norwich Road, Artham Road and London Road. Um, and for a new air source heat pump for the town hall, so haven't had any news on those just yet. And I think I've already mentioned about the neighbourhood plan walk around the town, which is taking place on Wednesday and about consultation, that's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, and as always, Sharon's uh report is available on town council website, if anyone wants to read it at their leisure. Um, next we have item sixteen, which is the investment strategy, consideration and resolution. And Sharon, have you got anything that you'd like to say on this?
Uh, not really, no, it was the, um, it is a draft, so if anyone's got any comments or suggested amendments, then. Um, it's quite short, but um nevertheless, it's, you know.
Worth while, worth while having.
Just doing it. Yes, yes, yeah.
Uh, in that case, can I have a proposal in second or to accept it, please? I've got councillor Ashley, seconded by councillor Dalton and show of hands. Thank you very much. Um, next we have item seventeen, uh, which is the N C L S funding application. For consideration and resolution, uh, Sharon, any comments?
Not really, no, um, I, I, um. I don't know what to feel about that one, because I just looked at the amount of income and support they already have.
Hmm.
And they are actually getting quite a lot of, um, pledges in, which they have, they have got quite a lot of money in the balance. But millions, a little something.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just inside, um, somebody who's been really helped by this process, you know, uh, and really has helped her through a minded build. And given her the, um, skills to actually. Research and do things and get things and supported again, rise through to court and everything, so they do. You know, do work. But they do, they already are sitting on one point one five million.
Okay.
That's what Susan.
Didn't you not receive an application for them, or, or similar law, law firm recently, for a grant?
I think we did.
Are we, are we saying, here we don't, yeah.
No, I, I'll, I'll correct that, they've got a receipt of one point, uh, one five million, but their expenditure. Is one point one eight nine million, so, um, as of March, sorry, as of. Well, that, that's projected, I think, that one. Uh, so actually. I'll take that back. So, yeah, I mean, if you want to give a donation.
It's not in the same last time.
Yeah.
So I, I have to say with the lack of free legal guidance.
Hmm.
Nowadays.
Did we not? Also, did we not say that we just bring in one of our local groups and grass and all that? I know much of the council now, so they do support people, but it's a national thing, isn't it? It's not a.
It's a Norfolk thing, yeah. They are Norfolk, yeah, um. But they're requesting a thousand, so you don't have to give a thousand if you just wanted to give a nominal amount or something. If, you know, in proportion to seventy five people from Attleborough were helped. Uh, in twenty four, twenty three and twenty four, so obviously that's like thirty eight, whatever, a year.
I think obviously a great service, and as I said, there's the previous, uh, things, obviously. It's a, it turns on the answering. But I reckon this is really sick and local.
Yeah.
For our national.
Okay.
I'm sure there's other organisations that have something.
Councillor Taylor?
Not just in Norfolk, it's international, it's the old book.
Yeah. It's on your view, isn't it?
Sorry.
Seems like you're just. That's, that's a proposal from councillor, uh, councillor Ashby, councillor Vetchum, Robert. Um, do we have a second, don't we? Councillor Wenham, and a show of hands, please.
Majority. So it's more, no.
Sorry, we have, we have all against, please, as well. And any abstentions? Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda this evening, we have, uh, item eighteen, which is the part of the Vono to review. Progress of trial period for consideration and resolution. Um, everyone should have had the report seconded by Sharon, just to give a, 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 um. How, how things have progressed over the last two months. And what I would say in addition to that support is, after I think some, quite frankly, discussions from our park with the D P S. Uh, at that part last week, there has been some improvement over the weekend, um, whereby the. Items that needed to be removed in the bar area earlier than we moved, uh, the storeroom that was being occupied. Um, has gone cleared. And the kitchen hadn't been cleared, but it was filled up again, so, um, I don't know if I can count that one. Sharon, is there anything that you'd like to say?
Um. Yeah, I mean, um, obviously on the face of looking at all the items that I've, 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 um, which collectively. There are a lot of niggly items there, um, some are, some points that I've made have legal sort of like standing, as in health and safety. Uh, repercussions with perhaps, um, the trading standards, um, and, and perhaps, you know, uh, certainly health and safety. Um, so if obviously, I mean, the council, we are doing our job in terms of. You know, monitoring it really, really closely, so it is being monitored closely now. And we, I feel that we've got a, a good rapport with the, um, football committee. There is definitely some sort of communication that, um, between the two parties. And also coming back to us, communication to us, that really does need improving, but we will work on that. But, um, but that, but also the football club also need to work on that as well. So I will view that just to sort of like try and get some, uh, standard information, which then helps us to know how they exactly operate. Um, but, um, yeah, collectively, obviously those items look very alarming. Um, all of those points have been, uh, given to the D P S and various members of the committee. So it really is up to you whether you, um, would like to review this, um, favourably. Or whether you would just like to, um, not review it favourably. Um, my, my, my view is that, in fact, I don't know, I shouldn't really give a view, so I won't give a view.
Um, councillor S Taylor.
Um, as the class stated earlier, some members have spent quite considerable time recently down in the Vono Building. And have had the opportunity to speak to some of the people affiliated to the football club and some of the committees. Um, I think the problem was, from my, my opinion, the D P S isn't actually part of the football club committee. So obviously there was miscommunication with him from the committee and from the person that. Seems to be charged with the, as going between, between the council, the committee and, and the D P S. Um, there was some quite concerning items there and I'm, I'm not going to lie. I would like to try and support the football club as much as possible, and I think this council has gone beyond doing that. There does need to be some, I think, conditions that need to be met on the behalf of the football club. I think the fact that the man of their committee are licensed trained, therefore do not understand the legal requirements and the protocols and procedures. Of licensing activities, I think that we need to stress to the committee more than the D P S, because he's not always there, he's not part of their committee. So I strongly feel that some of their committee need to undertake that training, and I think this council should.
They have.
Seek to have that done, but officially, unofficially, I think that. Seek to have that done, but officially, unofficially, I think that. We do need to have a clear who is delegated from the football club to the elements of the council. And what their specific role is, and I think that's from the football club, to address those issues, to give their committees. Delegated powers to, within their capability, so their treasurer, talk to the council about treasure issues, the secretary. The D P S and bar manager about the bar issues. I, I think they need some sort of proper structure, and I think we should insist on that if we're gonna be in the opposition with them. Um. I, I want to give them the extra time, I think it will take four of us actually to request that it's reviewed early. I'm not mindful to be one of those four to call for that to be reviewed early, I would like to see the six months go on. I'd like to see us get the improvements done as quickly as possible and see how they come with outside bodies going in. Because at the moment primarily is just them and their catering for their own needs and their own users. Um, but I do think that we need to insist that there is some legal type of training. Undertaken by some of their committees, so the responsibility doesn't just fall on a parent that has stepped up to save the club. And put himself in the position that he could be held responsible because the committee itself is not functioning well.
Can I just say that I did, um, give them some information, which is key information. One of which was a link to a site where they can get online licensing two thousand and three training. And they have actually said that they have now, so the D P S who I met with on Friday has. That has now circulated, that one has already done the training, and they all, all the people who are gonna operate the bar do intend to. Uh, do that training, so to say.
And I appreciate we are helping them, but our clerk, Saturday evening, had a committee member on the phone for an hour, ranking. Saturday evening is our clerk's time, I, I really think it needs to be stressed, we are here to help, we are here to support you. However, out of office hours, unless it is an emergency, please, like, send an email. Or wait until Monday morning, I think we're at a point now, we're eight weeks in, I know it's been a learning curve for them. But our staff shouldn't have to spend an hour on the telephone at eight o'clock in the evening. And, and then her Sunday afternoon going down and ra- like rectifying some of the issues. We have a office hours, and I think that the club now need to respect those office hours unless it's an emergency.
Yeah.
Do we have any comments from anyone else?
I just would like, as councillor Taylor said, to give them the extra time, but, you know, make sure. I think they need maybe a little bit of help, rather than criticism all the time, you know, I think they need a bit of support. But, um, I do think we need to give them those extra four months, and I'm sorry Sharon's putting a lot of burden on you. But, um, I would like to see it be successful.
Well, with all due respect, um, there is no way on God's behalf that they could be given more. What they might have been given by Sharon, because she has held their hand, stood with them, supported them. We've had countless meetings and engagements now, formally, informally, messages, uh. Through the telephone conversations, emails, so in, in terms of support. They, they've had the, the best support available. Yes, no, but I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just making sure everyone is clear. And they have wholeheartedly been supported, um, by the council and by our administrative team, um. The reason that this has come forward, obviously, is not, um, was not lightly, um, some of the issues. As have been detailed in regards to, um, legal implications, licensing implications, trading standards. Um, concerns and also health and safety. Um, while I would like to see, uh, the six month trial progress, and I am hopeful that actually. Following your engagement with the D P S this week, we can turn a new page. Um, if it is a matter of public safety, we have a duty and a responsibility to review it sooner. Councillor Wates.
All right, um, I'm agreeing with everything that's been said. We, we did say that we would give them six months. We obviously give them a lot of help and support. They've now got to use the rope to hang themselves, we can't keep doing it. But they've got to give, they need to give a chance to say, we've learned from it. So I'd like to see it go to six months. If we come back in two months' time, for example, and it's still disastrous, then we rethink it, potentially. But at the moment, I think we can go with it.
Thank you. Councillor Susa.
Yeah, I agree with that, councillor Wates, and with that councillor, um, S Taylor. Um, we gave them six months, was it October, was it? Were they again?
Yeah.
Was it April? So just give them that time, and the support that councillor Dale potentially could, could mean. Honestly, before, uh, do you mean things like trading standards, actually coming and speaking with them to see what, what's.
Anything that would actually assist them in making a good job of it, but, but not just for them, but for the council as well. If they're going to actually run the bar when it's hired out to, to anybody, then they've got to be. They've got to make a good job, but they're starting from nothing, and, you know, they need.
Yeah, and what I did, I liked some of the bar issues, I think there is a cleanliness issue as well, and I think. They've been in a position before where they could walk out, lock the door. And leave the building in any state that they've wanted, and I think in the early days, we have found that. That it has been left in any state that they wanted, so we have had to be critical. Especially now we do have people that are using the building outside of them regularly, we have the metal detectors that come in there quite regularly, for an example. So it was the cleanliness, not just the licensing issues. And I know, uh, some of the people affiliated have said that they are struggling with keeping it clean. I personally think we should, if they want, amend that little bit. And tell them that they can pay for us to clean it, they.
If I may, the hire and the cleaning is not on this agenda. No, this is in relation to the bar only, and obviously the cleaning is the hire's responsibility. Although obviously there has been issues in regards to the bar operations. Um, in which their contract says that, you know, the bins must be emptied at the end of every service. And of course, I don't think there's been a service yet where the bins have been emptied. Um, so something easy to do, and I'm hoping after some stern ones of Sharon, um, you know. They now stress and realise the importance of adhering to their contract with us. So I don't actually think that we require a resolution on this, um. I think it is just to note that there has been some issues, that they have been extremely serious, uh, in some cases. And that, um, this is where we, the position in which we're currently at, so.
Be pleased by councillor Wates saying bring it back in two months' time again, just to see how it's going.
Well, for just an update?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's reasonable.
Okay, of course, right, well, in that case, if there's no further comments, then let's go to us. Uh, then we will move on, uh, next we have item nineteen, which is an update on the council leases, the consideration and resolution. Um, it's not the consideration and resolution, is it?
I just wanted to give you an update really, because, um, the, the most concerning one to me is the scout's lease, because. Um, al- although the, I, uh, Meghan and I had meetings with them early, in the early part of last year. Um, and so it was, um, sort of like, um. Impressed upon us that we really do need to pull our finger out and get that scout lease underway, which we made an effort to do. We did initially have a problem with, um, the, the sort of like, the speed at which our solicitor was progressing, so. I changed solicitors, and, um, then we, you know, that, that second solicitor did, did actually do. Um, work quite speedily, but since, um, oh, you know, sort of like, well, for some months now. Uh, they have been sitting on the draft version that we have sent them, and, um. I had sent out an email just before Christmas to urge our solicitor. To really send them a strong email, so I did try to chase that today to see if our solicitor had, um, done that, but. I haven't had any word back from, um, her, um, but I just wondered if, um. If it is okay with you that I give them like thirty days to get, um. To get a, a decision one way or the other, as to whether the lease is sorted, because we, sorry. Too long, yeah, um, I'm just thinking as, because solicitors are the, sometimes solicitors have huge workloads and they. I was just thinking thirty days max.
Oh, I mean, they haven't. Uh. Paid rent or for thirty years, I don't think an extra thirty days is gonna make too much of a difference.
But I, I would like to really just sort of, but, 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 but obviously, um, what is beyond that? So what happens if they don't get that lea-, you know, sort of like, get a response to me adequately? What, what then? Um, because they. So, so, yeah, but what, what, what's beyond that? If we withdraw the offer, they are occupying a building that they own on our land. Um, you know, uh, that, that, what do we do?
I know that she is gonna hate me for this, and it's not gonna be a popular opinion. They have not paid rent for thirty years, who's paying that building? They've not paid rent for that building to be on our land in thirty years.
Yeah.
Actually, what is that legal status in that?
Yeah, well, um, i- if it's.
Sorry, just, just pass, help them understand the question, but see when you get solicitors of this, but what is the next?
Yeah.
But it's in my conliever rather than first giving that.
Yeah.
It's, it's legal point of view, this is the situation. This is what happens if.
Okay.
And that's clear, you can take professional advice.
Okay, yeah. So I would just pass that legal advice on, um, but i- is the thirty day thing still okay?
I think, I think thirty days is adequate, but do we know what it means?
No, I don't, no, no one's communicated.
Well, the answer that I get is always it's with our solicitor. Well, you would have thought so, wouldn't you? Yeah. It's bizarre, it's, it's. It's bizarre because they were the ones who were really starting to get, you know, quite irate with us, so we then. Acted and now we are waiting the months, if you know what I mean.
We're gonna have to walk around, look at the car pass there, and they're already mad today. Someone's doing something in the building, taking stuff in, it's like.
Yeah.
They're, they're still actively, obviously using it, but.
They also sublet, you know, they don't sublet, but they, um, have their own user groups as well as their own scouts, so.
Did not question solicitors, solicitors.
Well, that's what I, uh, my email was. Our solicitor, yeah, I, I urged our solicitor to get in touch with their solicitor to say. Uh, send a strongly worded email, it was the way I worded it, but, but since then I've had nothing, so here we are.
Not to be, um, my perspective here is, is actually costing the taxpayer money, because all the time they're just not responding, it's not costing them any money. Every time we chase it, it's actually coming out of the public purse. The fact that there's been no rent paid for such a long time has affected the public purse, and that is where our responsibility lies. And I know, like, it is an awful situation that we could potentially face. But we do, our obligation is to the public, like, that is our role, unfortunately. Um, thirty days, if that's what it's gonna be, but I wouldn't wanna see us waste much more money pushing this. When we know when the car park was done, which was to the benefit of all of the users and ourselves as the landowner. Our, our clerk actually was quite, like, yeah, under pressure because of the revenue, the considerable revenue. That the scout park was losing, if they're taking in considerable revenue, this issue needs to be addressed, you know, they were the words. That was used to our clock, we are losing considerable revenue. Well, we, we need to be taking those, those sort of comments into account as well.
Councillor Wates.
Technically, when does this have to be done by? Deadline, that this has to be signed soon.
Well.
There is.
But, but this process started in twenty twenty-one.
I think you've given them a line of time.
Yeah. Councillor Reynolds?
Are they landlocked in there?
Are they?
Landlocked.
Um.
They may own the road, they may own the building.
They own the building, we own the land.
They're basically.
Scotland.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
If they're landlocked, they can't.
Yeah.
I think the timeframe is like, if you, if you've shown more patience than trying to be a normal business would do. Please do correctly, but wrong.
I, I think to be fair, um, before I joined, they had been waiting quite a while for our solicitor.
Yeah.
Then even when I came, it was, I, I, it was months and months before even I could get our solicitor out, so I changed solicitors and then things got moving. So to be fair to them, they were waiting on us for some considerable times while. But now we are, but, but it, it's odd, because like you said, um, councillor Taylor. Um, they, um, were at pains to point out that, um, they were losing considerable revenue. Because they don't have a lease, they can't apply for the big grants, so they have lost out, but now they've got the opportunity to sign up. Which is just a matter of, it's a standard lease, there's nothing special about it, it's not happening, which is bizarre.
Then that you give them the thirty days that you instructed them to, the thirty days, and let's hope. The sake of scouts, he takes up now.
Yeah.
Before we move to that, our members contend that we issue that thirty day notice. But that myself, Tristan and Sharon tried to engage and meet with them to obviously discuss this. Um, and obviously the time pressures and the situation in which we've found ourselves.
I'm proposing for our solicitor to say, if you don't sign, the consequences are, is that the line we're taking with them?
Well, I think if you're gonna give thirty days, um, I, I suppose you could use wording which is general to say, then we would have to seriously review the situation. Of your occupation or something, um, but the solicitor would use those words.
Yeah, well, if we ever end on the end of the building, it's a moment.
Yeah.
Now, how do we stand as a body?
And also seek advice from the solicitor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where we would stand on the fact that they own the building.
You try going thirty days, or whatever, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, this is what I was, yeah, so I will get that advice anyway as well.
So that we offer thirty days, um, for, um, the, the lease to do something returned. That we seek, uh, advice from the solicitor on what the consequences could possibly be at the end of that thirty day period. And how we need to be standing with occupation.
And the legality of building.
Yeah.
And that myself and Tristan and Sharon try to engage and meet with, um, the scout leaders.
That's it.
Got another question, are we thirty days or thirty working days? I know, sounds tricky.
Hmm, I, I was thinking of just thirty days, yeah. Yeah.
Councillor Taylor, you happy to make that proposal? Seconded by councillor Reynolds, and a show of hands, please.
Uh, majority, yeah.
Uh, there is that.
One abstention, yeah, and do you want me to just quickly, very, very briefly, just update you with the other, oh, um, clubs? Um, that we have leases with, um, they're quite straightforward, um. Conop Bowls, um, is a fifteen year lease, uh, expires in March twenty-five. But I have been engaging with them, and it looks like we would just do a two-page extension on that. I could get that wording out to them, um, I was gonna do a full lease, but then I realised that the previous. New apartment times, they'll just have an extension, so I think I'll just, I'll see you on that one. Um, gamers, um, Bowls Club, uh, that, that, uh, expires in March twenty twenty-six. But we've already had a conversation with them, and we didn't, um, we didn't up their, uh, rent that was reviewed last year, if you recall. Um, the pavilion, uh, was signed in twenty sixteen, twenty-five year lease, I believe, so that's all in order. Um, and then my next job is obviously to work with the, um, the gamers, uh, football. Uh, gamers, yeah, the gamer site as well, so, yeah, that's just the general situation.
The athletics club, they have containers and stuff on our.
Oh, sorry, yes, I should, yeah, I had a meeting, didn't I?
To address that as well, because obviously football club pay.
Yeah, I have.
Not fair.
Yeah. No.
Let us not do.
I have had a meeting with them, haven't I? Oh, yes, I have, yeah, um, I, I had a meeting with the athletics academy as instructed. And, uh, I was hoping to get something back from them for this meeting, but I haven't had anything yet. But they did say that they, they have acknowledged it, they've acknowledged my presence at the meeting, and they did say they would get something invited. Um, with regard to.
And when we give them the time, we need to borrow sponsors as well, I think we just need to.
And we give them a time, give them tomorrow's once as well, I think we just need to.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, let's get them all.
Yeah, do you want me to give them thirty more days or by the next uh full council say? Uh February meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and also, um when we were, I was just trying to draw this information together today, um Anne and I were sort of looking at the um. It's a bit of an odd one because some of the buildings we don't own, but we insure them. So that, we don't know if anyone knows the history of that. Uh can we remember? Conop, yeah, is on our insurance.
It's on the schedule.
Yeah.
Um gamers bowls, um. Game is both. Club obviously, but that's different.
We own that, yeah, yeah, so so it's a bit strange that one. We do own the pavilion, oh, right, okay. I didn't know that, yeah.
Any other building that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very, so that the two bowls clubs is odd, isn't it, however, now we're going to uh. Sort of like do the new. For the extension, I do think I ought to address that because I don't feel happy about us paying a premium for a building that we actually don't own.
They just gave us over an insurance claim and we get the payback.
You've got no insurance interest in it.
Yeah.
We insure it, we pay.
So therefore we're we're wasting public money by paying premium on that. Yeah, and that would, it it obviously, one of the buildings is worth about two hundred and thirty, isn't it, thousand? That our premium will go down, I don't know substantially, but it would certainly go down if we took that on, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So everything on that?
Yeah.
Sharon, thank you, um next we have our second public participation, if any members of the public would like to participate. Yeah.
Um somebody else watching on television this morning, quite interesting, something that never ever occurred to me. Was um they were talking about men who've got prostate cancer or who have stomach bags. And when they go to the public toilets, they have sanitary type bins to get rid of their waste. Um and they were looking and trying to get these in all public buildings. I did pop into the gents, I see that we did have one, I didn't think we would because why would we, but is it something that could be considered for? Buildings that we own and.
Well, um we have a, in our disabled toilet, we do have a knacky bit of that.
Some of the gents don't actually use the disabled.
No, they don't, no, yeah.
If it's something that could be put into the gents toilets in all our public buildings.
Or is it similar to a sanctuary then, is it just?
That is a very, very good point, actually, yeah.
Well, this is what he said, they were saying, you know, it's something one of the general. And he, he needed to, um he didn't go anywhere because he used to go to football and he never went anywhere. And he supported Manchester United and he just stopped going, but something that Manchester United Football Club have just introduced to all public toilets.
Hmm.
So, isn't that what I'm asking?
Yeah, well done, that's a really, really good point.
And anything else?
Just an observation actually, um twice the Vuno building's come up in your um agenda tonight. Um. Vuno was a betting company which used that particular building as a warehouse for many years. It was definitely in use in nineteen sixty two when I moved to Station Road. Uh I think they vacated and left the big Vuno sign up for quite a few years. But I would have thought that ninety eight percent of the people in that bar would not know where the Vuno building is. You obviously do, because you call it the Vuno building.
Um I mean, I didn't know where it was, that is doctors hidden.
Do you know what it stands for, Adrian?
Does it still say Vuno on that?
Well, it will do when we are getting the signage done, it stands for Vaughan Only No Other. Because Vaughan was the name of the person who owned the business.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just, I think we've said that before in a meeting, haven't we?
I think that's fine, if there is a sign on it, then everybody will be to know that.
Uh yeah, I think I think we will be working on the marketing for it, so um yeah, if it's not known yet, it will be done.
But it is actually how it is addressed, it's by Royal Mail, the postal address does say Vuno building, yeah, if you put. Yeah.
Um I would say that the work that's been done there on the access to the Vuno building and the parking room.
Yeah.
Will the um glass recital facility be um reinstated or is that?
It is there, it's still, yeah, it's just been moved slightly down towards the gates. Yeah, that's definitely there, yeah, yeah.
Council for that, isn't it?
Yeah, goes into the public purse, yeah. Yeah, oh, that's good, yeah, you do with that, don't you?
Um um gas um housing was mentioned down near the road.
Yeah.
As far as I can remember, that gas housing was put in as a supply for the Conop Bowls Club. The barber and I built the Conop Clouse, Clouse. Um and as far as I can remember, that was put into supply to that.
Makes sense.
Um which wouldn't have actually gone over to the Vuno building or the state, I wouldn't have thought.
That does make sense, doesn't it? Yeah, it's handy to know.
And you don't want to extend that supply to the Vuno building now because you wouldn't want to dig up a lovely.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, when when the engineer came to look at the building, that he did actually give us a uh a link. To, he wanted to have solar, 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 solar panels on the roof. And that would actually enable us to have cheap electricity if we kept and didn't.
Exactly what I was going to bring up, and you looked aside on that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have got a link if you want me to pursue it, um we could get a hundred percent funding.
Funding.
And you get the, that's it, payback.
Batteries on.
Yeah, we meet our environmental objectives, obviously.
Just interested on the show, how much does it cost to? Keep them, because if you're not angry and the sun's going everywhere, you could get free. And air source heat pumps aren't all there cracked up to do, they're not always the right thing.
Yeah, it's always a disadvantage, yeah.
There was such a problem, they continue to run, they broke down because of our climate, they're great in a cold country.
Hmm.
But without climate, they have a lot of problems.
Yeah, hmm, thankfully for that, yeah, at least we're forward.
Thank you.
Or do you enjoy the rest of that one? And then you say the hill sort of gate can get broken, maybe clear that and make it more obvious if people.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, good idea.
We did actually ask the other day, if you could just place them in there, because they're just sort of. The whole, it wasn't public half, but yes, they decided.
Yes, yeah.
So you don't get that.
Yeah. I mean, there is an option to put them quite near the cram panel gates at the top end. Because there is some yellow hatch there, which makes it a bit easier to get out of the bar and. Oh, yes, that's right, we did, yeah, sorry.
And you see them from the front, yes, they are visible, so. Is everyone content for Sharon to explore the solar panels?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fabulous. Any closing comments? Right, well, thank you so much for participating, everybody, and next we have item twenty one, which is items of the next agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to put forward present? No, we'll leave that open then, thank you very much, and the meeting is closed.